I have a pastor that's supposed to be here, but he's not here. I don't know what's going on. He may have...
That's a fine way to welcome me back.
Well, I figured if you had to pray, you'd stay straight. It is four o'clock and time for the City of Telahoma Planning Commission meeting to begin, so I'll call the meeting to order. It's obvious we have a quorum here today, and we welcome the new members, Mr. Blank and Mr. Lawson. We're glad to have you with us and helping us in this activity. And Ray, if you would lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag before we start.
Please stand before me. Shalom, Father, we thank you for all your blessings in life. We thank you for this day for wanting to raise your hands. We thank you for our city. We thank you for the opportunities to serve. I thank you as things resonate. Amen. And then the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if you would please take a look at the agenda that we have and are there any changes or things that wish to be done to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would just let you know that the applicant for item 7B2, I'm requesting to remove from the agenda tonight.
So do we make a move, make a motion to approve the removal of that item from the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and second to remove item B2 from the agenda of this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. It is so removed. Now, if you will, with that, are we satisfied with the agenda then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. All right, so if you will take a few minutes and take a look at the meeting minutes that we have from last time. Do we see any additions, corrections, or adjustments to what we see?
Chairman, I have a question.
All right.
There's a reference to a meeting on August the 20th, but I find no minutes from that meeting.
The minutes for the August meeting, we're coming out with the meetings for this meeting come next month. We got a little behind. We had a couple of special call meetings over the last few months, so we're trying to get those all done and be as accurate as possible.
Okay. So no other additions or corrections to the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as printed in the meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Yes?
There's two cents of minutes that need to be...
Okay, this is the July 16th, I'm sorry.
The regular, the regular meeting, and then there was that special call meeting.
Special call meeting, yeah. So we're doing the July 16th meeting right now. So approval of both, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. Take a look at the July 30th special call meeting minutes now. I have two of those things on there. Are there any additions or corrections to these? Hearing none, I'll attend to motion.
Motion approved. Minutes from July 30th, 2018.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the special call meeting minutes of July 30th, 2018. All those in favor, as printed in the packet, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. Any old business to come before this group? Seeing none here and not hearing of any prior to. We'll continue. Reports of officers and staff?
Staff has no report.
Okay. Then we'll proceed to new business. We have a site plan for storage hangar number two Northwest Taxway Lane, and that's on pages eight through, eight through 16. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ZMA 224, the request to rezone property, I mean, excuse me, the site plan, section 7A, site plan, storage hangar number two Northwest Taxway, as presented in the package. Do we have any discussion? I would like to make one comment. From speaking from the chairman's side, this is the first time I have seen a site plan review checklist. I like this. I would like to see this more when we come to this. Any other discussion or comment?
With your comment about that's the first time you've seen this, is that not standard procedure? Check off that.
Well, sometimes they'll do it, sometimes they won't. I don't like, I'm not going to turn down their application because they haven't done it. I usually, I go through there anyway and then go to the checklist to make sure everything's on there, you know, anyway, so I didn't...
But when it comes to us, normally that is not filled out, or you filled it out?
It's normally not filled, it's supposed to be filled out by the applicant, but I could, we can start requiring them to do that and submit it with the application.
I mean, Scott, you're in the construction business. Is it a pain in the patekey to fill that out?
Not really.
I would make them fill it out.
Okay.
I mean, if it's going to make our job easier, you know, just do what you're supposed to do. I don't want to be up...
For me, it's just seeing that they've done their due diligence up front. That's what I'm really...
Well, they'll have to do it before it gets through you, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If this is done by the contractor, that's good, but in my opinion, it should also be reviewed by the planning code's office before it comes to us, and they testify to us that they agree with it.
And it is generally reviewed at the meeting where the contractor comes before all the people?
Yeah, it's going to be approved by all the agencies and the building committee.
Because if I look at this thing and just see a check mark, all I know is somebody's checked it.
Well, there's some redundancy, yes, but...
No, it's not, I don't look at it as redundancy. It's somebody other than the person that's applying for the site approval saying, yes, it's been done.
I'll just make them fill it out and give us a copy of it then, I guess.
And our people...
And tell us that he agrees with it.
Yeah.
I think the chairman and Alderman Blacks have made solid points. I think it's a good idea to get it done.
So we'll start asking for that. All right, we have a motion and second to approve this as presented to us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Site plan is approved as presented. Next comes a public hearing on zoning map amendments, and this will be ZMA 224, a request to rezone property at 700 William Northern Boulevard from I-1, which is industrial, to R-3, which is multifamily, I believe it states, multifamily?
High-density residential.
High-density residential, okay. Applicant is the Harton Family Partners. This is a public hearing, so the floor will be open to the public first for any comments to be made. If you are going to make comments, please step to the podium, give your name, your address, and you'll have two minutes to present whatever you want to say. If there's someone else that wishes to dedicate their minutes to you, they can do that, but they will have to give their name and their address when they do such. So I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Do we have anyone representing the applicant?
That would be me.
Okay.
My name's Daryl Welch, 207 Blue Creek Landing in Telahoma. I'm just the general manager of the Harton Family, or Harton Realty Company, Harton Family Partners. Y'all have any questions? I think it's, there's been something already laid out, is that right, to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
The area you want to reset because it's not the whole property, because it's a property processing that we only accept it.
I see that's right.
I got a question of Mr. Lawson, you know, there's not much I-1, what color is this? Is this I-1 or I-2?
I-1.
How much is, how much I-1 is left in that, in the airport footprint?
Well, all the large lots that are still under the airport authority are zoned I-1. I think there's like one that's like 400 some acres, and there's another one about the same size, that's all still I-1.
More north, in the northern section?
Well, where the runways are, the area that's to the west of the airport's all still I-1. There's some area still over there on the, where the road forks through there, they still have some I-1 in that area as well, too.
There's not many, not bordering Cedar Lane, there's not much I left, correct?
Right, there's, there's...
Nothing?
There's not.
Yeah. So it looks like we're zoning this more, you know, residential or light commercial or whatever. I mean, this is, this is next door. I know they've been out surveying, so finally I pinned down one of the partners at the Harton Family Group and asked him what was going on, and he told me. And then, you know, I think it'll be a good addition, you know, as long as they'll put the sidewalks in front like they're supposed to. That's part of code, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Got another question. You got football practice.
Can we save that for a second?
Sure.
Okay. Are there any other public comments for this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, you can have a seat. And I will entertain a motion on this request.
A move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the reason, to send a favorable approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman on ZMA 224, the request to rezone the property at 700 William Northern Boulevard from I-1 to R-3. And now, is there any discussion for the board, for the planning commission itself? Now's when you...
That roadway there, there's a fair amount of commercial activity that's been on that Cedar Lane there. This pretty much precludes any development of C-2 with this rezoning, is that correct?
Well, it would be correct, lot, it was, lots of property is not industrial, but it would only be the project that they're planning on building in the R-3. But there wouldn't be any commercial or non-residential type of development that could be done on it after it's rezoned.
Well, frankly, I'm new here, remember?
Okay.
Okay. The map, I don't, I see one, red lines around one property there. Their Cedar Lane is in the zone. There's two items actually that's outlined in red. Are those the only things we're talking about rezoning there?
Well, we're, the way they're, reason why they're both red is right now they're connected, they're one lot, but they're only wanting to rezone the portion that's on the west side of the road.
Closest to the airport, right next to my office.
So the triangular shaped portion on the right-hand side, they're not going to rezone?
Correct.
Yeah, they're going to, I believe they're going to split that lot eventually, obviously.
Okay. It's already physically split by Cedar Lane, so...
Right, but it's still connected by a parcel hook, so it's like it's one lot.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Are we dividing that lot?
No, they're just requesting that portion.
Can you have a lot that is part, and part of it's in one zone and part in...
Yeah, we have a couple of those in the city.
Well, I didn't ask if they were in it, is it legal?
It's legal.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, they can do it legally.
Well, it's not that we hadn't done it.
Evidently it's legal right now.
It occurs in other jurisdictions.
Okay, so any other further discussion?
I want to make a comment that certainly that type of high-density residential that's being proposed is certainly a need in the city, so...
Yeah, I think we all, most of us agree on that. All right, so we are voting on sending a favorable recommendation to the request ZMA 224 to rezone this property from I-1 to R-3 to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. All of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Since we, since item two has been removed and we have no further new business on that, is there any other new business to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm due on the board, and four o'clock seems to come early for me. I'd just like to poll the other commissioners to see if there would be any traction for perhaps moving the meeting time to a 4:30, or say, it's not that I can't do four o'clock, it could be more amenable for me if it were moved to 4:30. So I'd just like to poll the rest of the commissioners, see what the thoughts are.
I'd like to move it to five. Four thirty's better. Five would be great for me. Mr. Gregory?
I can go either way. I usually have to take off a little early to get here and go clean up, and it wouldn't bother me.
Four thirty's fine, I'm just across the street, so that doesn't... I'm flexible, too. I only have one thing that I have to, that I do have to consider, Lee, and that's the fact that if we move it to 4:30, then we increase Nina's overtime.
That's what I was thinking about, too.
Requirements.
I'd take your that.
No, she's going to get paid for it, but if you're going to hold her late...
Well, we've got to follow the labor laws.
That's right. So let's poll our recorder. Is it amenable to you to move it to 4:30 as well?
It is, I'm okay with that.
So do you want to propose a motion?
I'm fine, hey, Bill.
Bill, you okay?
Yeah.
Four thirty or five?
Are we voting on four thirty or five?
Then I'll make a motion that we move our meeting time from four o'clock to 4:30.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second to move the formal meeting time for the Telahoma Planning Commission from four to 4:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, big question, do we have to put that in front of the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
No.
Okay. That takes care of that. Okay? We're seeing nothing else to come after that before the meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, October 15th, at 4:30. Okay? I entertain a motion to adjourn the Telahoma Planning Commission.
Move to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and second to adjourn the Telahoma Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Meeting is closed, and we will open the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting at this time, which begins on page 36. Shouldn't be a bit short, I'm trying. Yeah, I'm getting there, I'm getting there, get me there. Did you, okay, on page 36, okay, you're right. And it took me a while to get there, I should have started from the back. Okay? We'll call the meeting to order, and you can see the agenda. The only thing on the agenda will be the reading and the approving of the minutes for July 16th and August 20th, so, really, August 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't have any special call planning or board, don't even feel any urgency.
Okay, so with no objections, can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. If you approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor, say aye.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, maybe out of order here. Looking back at the zoning appeals meeting minutes, on the new business, they voted on a, the event center at 725 Old Shelby Highway. Tell me what that is, somebody?
That was a, it's a request to do, they're asking for a rezoning right now, to rezone it to agriculture, and then they're going to, they had to do a conditional use permit to do that after it gets rezoned, if it gets rezoned to agriculture, to be able to do that at different times.
That's the sign that's on the, going out 1:30 that's on the parish property. You know that?
No, it's beside the parish property, just one property up from Charles Parish.
Well, I know we're Charles, but I saw that sign, and I called Charles to ask him what's being rezoned. He said, it's not us, it's, it's...
Mr. Crable and Tina.
Right, Tina, but they're, that property is owned, what now?
R-1.
And they're wanting to switch it to agriculture?
Yeah.
So they can host events in that barn?
Yeah.
That's been approved already?
The conditional use permit's been approved on contention of the rezoning happening.
All right.
And we sent, and we sent a recommend, a favorable recommendation on that to the BOM.
4-1.
They'll have the public hearing on that.
So it ain't come to us to be rezoned as of yet?
It will be this month, probably.
It'll be next, it'll be next Monday, it'll be before the Board of Mayor.
One question, you know, there's been some contention about, you know, the size of the signs and where they're put, and who reads them, and yada, yada, yada. That sign, I noticed, because I drive bike four times, but just barely noticed it, but it wasn't even on the piece of property to be rezoned. Where did, what are the rules and regulations about where those signs are supposed to be?
That one, we didn't, wasn't done correctly, but what we usually do is we put a flag out on the property that's supposed to be rezoned, and the Public Works Department comes out there with their, the machine installs the, like, the regulatory signs and speed limit signs, and they put that sign in with that machine, so no one goes up there, pulls it out and takes it.
Right. But there's, it's sort of inconspicuous, even the one that's rezoned down from my office, you know. I know there, you know, the reason I bring this up is because we've had some issues about signage, and, you know, we need to make sure we get that right, if that's big enough, is it?
No.
I don't want to, in 20 years, say, they didn't make that sign big enough, they did not notify the public properly. And, you know, you understand where I'm going.
We can look at it and see if we can get like a double face sign and put it where, if you're going down the street, you'll see it, you know, either side of the street, either lane you go down, you'd be able to read it instead of facing the road.
You know, and the record needs to show that we've discussed this, so, you know, when I'm old and grayer and my hair's falling out, or I'm no longer here, we have a record that we've discussed these things, you know, and not have to guess what the planning commission was talking about 20 years ago. Maybe that'll keep us out of some contentious.
The newspaper?
Well, I don't care if it's in the newspaper. I just think, you know, we need to do our due diligence and make sure we're doing things like they, you know, I don't want to, in 20 years, be in a litigious situation because we didn't do what we needed to do now. So just make sure everybody knows what's going on, and there's, you know, everybody is familiar about what we're planning on doing, or these property owners are planning on doing, so...
In this particular case, in view of some discussion that you're bringing up, I've taken, I've gone out and asked the people that have adjoining property there, their opinion about that rezoning, to get some sense of what the community thinks about.
Right, and I think that's the proper thing to do. I didn't, I called, I called Charles and said, what's going, said, there's, you know, because he's, he's affected mostly by that, you know, the Hales will be affected on the other side, you know, and I'm across the way, but, you know, just as long as the people in the area have, have, know what's going on.
There's definitely been a problem in that arena in the past, but one of the things we did recently, it doesn't take care of the whole community, but it does take care of the adjoining neighbors, but we passed a motion, a resolution, or whatever it's called, to have the code's department send a letter to each one of those adjacent, adjoining property owners. Am I right?
Yeah, it was, it was an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. I think that's very progressive and smart thing to do.
Yeah. Now, I don't know whether that's taken place yet.
Is that certified return receipt letter?
No, the only deal is we were, we got it first-class mail.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree.
I have it certified, so they, I never got that letter. You gotta, you gotta back yourself up, you know, that certified. I don't know if we have to redo all that or not, but, you know, that way they know what's going on, you know?
And you got proof of it.
And you got proof of it, you know? Well, we sent you a letter, I never got a letter, the dog ate it up, or whatever. You hate to, you hate to have to do it this, but sometimes you have to do it like that, you know, just to back yourself up, because, you know, that's the world we live in now.
I thought the letter to adjacent property owners was a good idea.
Yes.
Because putting in the newspaper, nobody ever looks at those classified ads back there. I don't, so I assume nobody...
Well, you look at the dead people, but maybe not the classified.
Right.
Make sure you're not in there.
I do, that's exactly what I do. But, and even riding by, you know, a lot of people don't ride by to even see a sign, but that letter, especially if it's certified, is documented proof that they have been notified of the upcoming proposal to change.
Would we have to change the zoning ordinance to have it certified, or are you just certify?
We can just certify them.
We need a motion to that, or just, you know?
Let's look into it first, because we have, we have to make sure that it doesn't exceed our budgetary allotment for that. We have a budgetary allotment for how much we can spend on that.
Can't be that much.
It's around $650 for a certified letter.
Yeah, but how many, I mean, how many letters you going to send down?
What's the minimum we send?
It's got to be, we send it out to everybody within 100 feet of the lot.
You can, you can have like 25 to 30 people, you can be sending 25 to 30 letters.
I think that we could, the mayor and board and Alderman can help you out if you needed that money for...
Oh, good, well, good. We got two of you here, you can do something about that part of it. We'll look into it from a monetary standpoint and get an idea of what it will take to do that.
You've been doing that for how long? Two or three months?
What?
Sending the letters out?
Oh, that didn't just, that got approved like last month.
All right, so we don't have a track record to track?
Not yet. It was kind of because of other things that that got started, so...
I bet.
So, all right, so, anyway... Oh, good. Well, good. We got two of you here, you can do something about that part of it. We'll look into it from a monetary standpoint and get an idea of what it will take to do that.
You've been doing that for how long? Two or three months?
What?
Sending the letters out?
Oh, that didn't just... That got approved like last month.
All right. So, we don't have a track record to track?
Not yet. It was kind of because of other things that that got started, so...
I bet.
So... All right. So, anyway, looking at... Did we approve the agenda?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so then let's review the minutes of the July 16th.
Actually, I think there was a second, and then it was... There's never...
Yeah, it was never approved.
Ah, so we need to vote.
See, I had a question about the Vent Center, and it got kind of off on the notification.
We did vote on the...
We voted on the agenda.
On the agenda for this one?
We did.
Okay.
We voted on the first seven minutes.
We voted on the first seven minutes?
No, we didn't vote on the minutes. We just voted to approve the agenda. We voted on the first, then voted on the second, and then we discussed it, and it got off rails, so this is the first seven minutes of the picture.
Okay, so, let's... We didn't approve the minutes. I didn't think we'd approve the minutes. I thought we... I was worried we hadn't approved the agenda yet, and we're still stuck.
We did.
Okay. So, let's look at the meeting minutes for July 16th. And I'll entertain a motion with no corrections or additions. I'll entertain a motion on these minutes.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the July 16th minutes of the Board of Zoning and Appeals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved. Now, moving on to the August 21st minutes. Any additions or corrections to this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the August 24th... August 21st minutes of the Board of Zoning and Appeals as printed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Those minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say, you know, my comments probably needed to come in after we had voted to approve.
Yeah, they should have been after... Well, you're...
You get your motion in here second.
Just so you understand, get a motion in second, and then we start a discussion.
Right.
Okay? We'll get it straightened around again. I'm still new at this, too, trust me, so... Okay, seeing no other business, we don't have any unfinished business and no new business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So... So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn the Teloma Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned.